All right, let's go ahead and get started. We'd like to welcome everyone that's in our council chambers and all those who are watching on TV, welcome. I've asked Nick Porter if he'd give us the opening prayer.
Our eternal Father in heaven, we bow our heads before thee this evening grateful for the opportunity which we have to gather together, grateful for this great place which we call home and live, and pray that blessings be upon us. Pray thou bless those who are serving our country at home or abroad that they will be watched over and protected, grateful for the first responders within our city as well, and pray for their protection. We ask thy Spirit to guide the decisions that are made here tonight, and grateful for all those who are here to participate in this public meeting, and give thee thanks for all the many blessings we have, and say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Nick. I've asked Councilman Mendenhall to leave us in the pledge.
Will the audience please rise and repeat the pledge after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, if there's anyone, let's move to public comments. If there's anyone from the public that'd like to address the mayor and the council, you can come up here and we'll give you three minutes and you can address us. We'd like you to state your name when you come up so we know who you are.
I'm Jackie Smith. Most of you know my dad is Fred Vincent. What you may not be aware of is my family has been farming in the river bottoms continuously for over 150 years. In a few minutes, we'll be given an update on the city's plan for the river bottoms and the use of TDRs. I was able to see this video over the weekend, and while it tells a nice story, I don't feel it tells the full story. What it does not tell you is that TDRs, or transfers of development rights, are the city's way of taking land from landowners in the river bottoms without having to pay for it. It does not tell you that in exchange for this program, the citizens of Spanish Fork are unknowingly agreeing to higher-density housing in other areas of town without knowing where those areas will be. TDRs give the city a doubt for years to come. If citizens question zoning changes or complain about high-density housing, city can always answer with, "It's what we had to do to save the river bottoms." What farmers are not being told is if they decide to participate in this plan, the city will be able to tell them what crops they can grow, what animals they can raise, and how they will have to maintain their own land. It also limits who they can sell their ground to in the future. As a landowner, I would like to know if the city has done a feasibility study. If so, I'd like to ask for a copy of the results, and if not, I'd like to ask why. I would also like to know if the city has looked into other ways to accomplish the goal of keeping the river bottoms as open space, such as getting a bond and purchasing the ground outright. This option has been mentioned by Seth Perrins in May of 2019 and again into July of 2020, but I can't find where it was followed up on. Also, in that same July 2020 council meeting, Councilman Mendenhall expressed concern with increasing density in the rest of the city to make up for no building in the river bottoms. And if this is what is best for the city, that was his question. I haven't seen an answer to that either. As you watch the video, I'd like you to ask yourself a few questions. Is it fair to expect farmers to bear the brunt of providing the city with green space while at the same time reducing the value of their land? Is moving forward with this plan the right thing to do with so many loose ends and unanswered questions? And if the goal is to truly preserve the river bottoms, are TDRs the best option, or could there be a better way? I appreciate you taking the time to listen to my concerns, and if anyone from the city council or the city administration would like to speak with me at any time, I'm very happy to have that conversation. To quote Mary Laufson, "We only have one chance to get this right."
Thank you so much. I know that we're going to have a Facebook Live question and answer on the TDRs next week, so a lot of those things can be addressed then. But I appreciate you putting yourself out there so you can talk to each one of us. So we'll see how that goes. Thank you.
Could we address some of her questions after we watch the video possibly? Or should we wait for the?
There, I didn't see a point to, I didn't see where I could speak after, so that's why I chose to speak.
Yeah, and so, and it's, that's what we're not doing. So that's why we'll have that meeting next week, where it'll, people can call in, ask all the questions, we'll try and answer all those, since this isn't a public.
And I would be happy to come down at any time and have a conversation face-to-face with any of you before then.
Great. Hey, thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay, anyone else who'd like to come talk to the mayor and the council?
Can you just say something?
Well, go ahead.
So tonight, on the agenda, it's just a one-on-one item, it's not anything that is action-oriented, so you can certainly ask all the questions you want as you're visiting with Dave about it, but it's not on the agenda for any kind of action other than the review of that video.
Okay. All right, come on up here, good-looking crew. State your name.
My name is Chance Christensen. What I would like is a new skate park. A lot of Spanish Fork skaters and scooters and BMXs can all agree that the Spanish Fork Skate Park is pretty small and it's cramped, and we could use some improvements on the skate park. The skate park right now has two bowls, but they're kind of uneven. It's got spine, couple of hills, an up rail, a box, a hip, volcano, and a little bit of flat ground. The big bowl also has an extension with coping, so you can do small grinds with all of this. You can progress in skating, but not very far. We have compared our skate park with other skate parks, such as Springville, Provo, and Lehigh. I would also like to bring up the different categories of skate. The first type is transition. Transition consists of bowls, quarter pipes, half pipes, and mini ramps. The second one is street. Street consists of rails, ledges, and stair sets. Three, flat ground. Flat ground is the first thing skaters will learn. It consists of the basics, like ollies, kickflips, shoveits, and heel flips. Springville Skate Park has good transition, and so does Lehigh, and that's something we'd like. Provo, there's a lot of street obstacles, like flat ground, and they've got a bunch of manual pads. It's got a three-block, which is the type of stair set, yeah. It's got a bunch of rails and stuff like that. And Lehigh, it has super grand transition, like a small bowl and a vert bowl for more advanced skateboarders. You probably know skateboarding's now in the Olympics and has inspired a lot of new skateboarders. We would like to see some better obstacles at the Spanish Fork Skate Park, including rails, ledges, manual pads, and better transition, with a full bowl and even coping, and maybe a deeper bowl. We hope to see new Spanish Fork skate parks soon.
Great.
Thank you, Chance.
Appreciate that. After we see all the, everybody has an opportunity to ask public comments, I might have Dell come up and maybe address some of your issues with the skate park.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Nice job. Anyone else who'd like to come up and talk to the mayor and the council? Seeing none, then Dell, maybe you can come up in just a few minutes. Hate to put you on the spot like that, but I like putting you on the spot like that. Dell's our Parks and Recreation Director.
Had I known I was going to talk tonight, I would've wore a tie.
That's all right, we'll let you slide.
Sound familiar? Yeah, I, the skate park, skate park expansion has been on our wish list for a while, and I'm pretty sure Slade? Suede, sorry. Did you find the email we talked? Okay. I've been in communication with somebody from this group, but yeah, it's been on our list for a while and obviously has been displaced by other capital projects that were pressing at the time, so I'm happy to meet with these guys. I've actually called for and would love these young men and others to sit on a focus group so we can talk about exactly what they would like to see in the park. But it has been on our capital project list for a while, so we'll start doing some groundwork with these guys and find out exactly, exactly what they would like to see, and then we'll put together a proposal that we can bring to you at another time.
That's great.
Does that work?
You bet. Appreciate that. You guys make sure you get your contact information with them and then?
Nick's, Nick's got it.
I've got chances, so.
Okay. Yeah, so we want, we appreciate you coming and talking to us about that, you know? All right.
Thanks for coming in.
Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to council comments. Let's go, Councilman Mendenhall.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing that I have for this week was a couple of slides that I sent to Nick regarding our monthly meetings with the Utah League of Cities and Towns. It's always discussed in, especially with the census that was just released, of the growth that's in the state of Utah. We are the fastest-growing state in the nation, and obviously that growth is concentrated in cities up and down the Wasatch Front. And so, these, these quality growth commissions, you can see these different commissions that are put together across the state. The only reason I wanted to show this slide is this is just three of those that have to do with, or a couple of them, excuse me, that have to do with growth right now, that our staff is constantly in conversation with, as well as council members and the mayor too. The next slide there just goes to show you what is coming up as far as these meetings. So if anybody has the strong desire to maybe serve in local government, this one screen just stood out to me of like, your August and September's pretty full. So to talk about growth in the state, what's happening in your city, and what we do as a league is collect all that data and then talk to, talk to the legislature so they can get correct information, accurate information, in the decisions they make to continue the success of Utah still being a great place to live and our cities being great places to live. The next one has to do with water, so there's obviously on people's mind this year in a drought. This slide here stood out as well, that you can see the whole state is pretty much in red and dark red, and we all know that. But the, this slide comes off Governor Cox's website at the state, that basically the tools, the processes that the state has relayed to cities of what to do to conserve water here and going forward. The good thing about when you look at these, again, is Spanish Fork being the home of pride and progress, leaning into that progress decades ago, but also still today in decisions we're making today. So again, agricultural is a big use of water in the state of Utah, and obviously that's a big part of the success of our state too. But they do let us know that there's ways to optimize that. The secondary water meters is something we constantly talk about in Spanish Fork. You're going to see that mandated sooner rather than later at the state level, and again, we've had that for going on 17 years or so. So again, this is something that Spanish Fork's held up at the state level for, but we can all do our own parts too in helping to get out of a drought and conserve water where we can. So that was most of my last couple of weeks, Mayor, was meetings with the League of Cities and Towns, and so there's a couple of slides off that. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Councilman Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. Went to a ribbon-cutting last week for Old Navy, and that was exciting, and we got ran over by a lot of moms going in to do some of their back-to-school shopping, so welcomed them to town. Also wanted to mention at the farmer's market, if you haven't been down yet, on Saturdays, it's down at the Justice Center, just to the end of Center Street west of here, since we're under construction here in this parking lot, and people are still finding us. I can tell you, I can tell you that as a vendor, that people are, people are coming in and buying the fresh local produce. So appreciate everybody supporting that effort and local, local grown farm products. Yesterday had a Nebo water meeting, and we were awarded the Water Smart Grant. That was something to note about, and we're still gathering info on our groundwater database project as we continue to work through that. So those were, those were the meetings I had, Mayor. I wanted to take a moment and take something from Councilman Mendenhall, as usual, minute of active and healthy. And we had a family friend who, he spent 10 years in the Marines, and as he, after those 10 years, he PTSD, succumbed to suicide. A young father, and so two years ago was his anniversary, and so to, between his death of August 2nd and the birthday of the Marines, we do 100,000 push-ups between just friends and families and strangers and anybody. So this picture was date night. I convinced Councilman Mendenhall and his wife and a few of us to go over and log some push-ups for Kyle Lamorale over in the Orem Cemetery. And through the Active and Healthy Initiative, we've spent a lot of effort trying to help educate people about suicide. It's something that's close to, close to me and my family, as we've had unfortunately some of that in our family. And had a friend shoot himself over the weekend, and he survived, but gosh, it just found himself in some tough spots with, you know, not happy about how the football team's going and girlfriend breaking up with him, and it's just, just takes me back to a lot of the training that we learn and the QPR training that the Active and Healthy Initiative teaches us. If we can get people into a good spot, just 10, 15 minutes down the road, be that friend or person that people can talk to. And so there's so many resources, the National Alliance of Mental Illness, and phone numbers, and people that really can talk to you and be a resource if that's something that you need. And I've always put it out there that if anybody wants to talk, I'm always available and would be willing to lend an ear if that's something that somebody was needing. So appreciate you indulging me on that moment, Mayor. That's all I have.
Notice your arms weren't bulging very much.
Did you see I was struggling with my push-ups? My wife, my wife did hers faster than.
All right, thank you. Councilman Argyle.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I just have one thing I just want to mention to the city on August, or on the 21st of August at 9:00 AM in the morning, they're doing a, placing a monument at the cemetery to recognize women in the military. Just wanted to mention that was going to happen, and then they're having a tea at the seniors afterwards, so if you're interested in that, pre-come and see. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Councilman Marshall.
I'm pretty speechless tonight.
Thank you.
Chad, Chad went to the airport work for me, I couldn't make my schedule work, so he very soon did that for me. Other than that, we didn't meet, so I don't have anything to report.
Great. Councilmember Beck.
Okay, I think my first thing I have is the end-of-year summer reading program was a huge success at the library a couple of weeks back. We had a dunk tank there, and we had our assistant city manager Tyler Jacobson, as well as our library director Scott in the dunk tank. Lots of kids, it was just really fun to see all of the parents that had encouraged their kids to read over the summer, so I appreciate the library staff and their time and effort putting all of that together. And then on this past Saturday was the children's market on Main Street, and there were over 50 booths down there on the corner, and just lots of kids. This young woman, she was doing calligraphy and writing on different things, and there were cookies and lemonade and shirts and just lots of different things that the kids were learning skills to interact with other kids and adults and be engaging and being courageous. So thank you for everyone that came there. And then yesterday morning, our Parks and Rec fed breakfast to the local high school principals, elementary principals, teachers, and we just have a really good relationship with Nebo School District. So thanks for breakfast, Parks and Rec. And then our police department last night had a safety night out and engaged the community there as well. So just thanks for our great staff. It's so appreciated, all you do to get back to our community. And then this morning in the paper, well, I guess it's not a paper, it's all online now, right? I thought I would just share a little bit of the consensus, the census report, that between 2010 and 2020, Spanish Fork grew 22.8%. We went from 34,691 residents to 42,602. So I thought that was just a good update. And our neighboring cities like Salem and Mapleton are growing much faster than us, and then some of our neighbors on the very north end of the county are growing. But, but like Councilman Mendenhall said, it's coming fast, we're growing like mad in our state, and so we appreciate everyone helping to manage that. So I think that's all I have.
Great. Let me comment on the children, or the child, or?
Children's market on Main.
Children's market. I've learned that you take a lot of $1 bills.
Yes.
You know, because, you know, Cheryl's buying everything from all her kindergarten, former kindergarten kids, and so it's kind of fun. It's a really fun activity to see that, and to see them get out of their comfort zone and, you know, engage with you. So that's, that's an awesome thing, I really enjoyed that one. And so, that was good. Yeah, let me report a little more on that police public safety night out, open house last night. The chief and Chief Baum and Chief Jarvis did a fine job with handing out hot dogs to all the kids there, so you did a great job, chief. In fact, he told me he was going to apply for a job at Glades, so it was all good there. So great thing, great turnout, had the canine dogs there, and, you know, they went after Seth, but Seth fought them off just fine, and so it was really good. So nice job. So we appreciate our first responders and all that they do here in our town, and the prepared to handle any emergency that we need at this time. The other thing, I got a letter from the mayor of Cedar City, Mayor Wilson Edwards, I believe is her last name there. On the July 26th, they had the worst flooding that their city's ever had in their history, and so a bunch of cities rallied and threw their aid, and Spanish Fork sent out some sandbags. And this is what she says, one paragraph here, she said, "I along with the entire city of Cedar City cannot express how grateful we are that you and the city of Spanish Fork were willing to assist us by sending extra sandbags. We were ecstatic when they arrived and had an outpouring volunteers to help fill them. Our community is truly awesome, ah, and our community is truly awe-inspired, and I'm proud to be a part of it." We sent over 5,000 sandbags down there to them to help them. So that's what we do here, we help each other, and that's great. That's, I love seeing stuff like that. One other thing, school's starting, I believe tomorrow. Please, please, please look out for those kids as you're driving down the streets. They're going to be running and walking across those busy streets. Be aware, those are precious kids, and we don't want to lose any of them, so my plea to you is to slow down and look and see what's going on, and let's, let's not have any accidents if we could. Seth, can I have you come up and maybe address a few things that were asked in our public comments last week, our last time we met?
Thank you, Mayor. We, last week we had a couple of residents come, and they had some requests that were not, we weren't able to specifically get answers to and all the details to their questions in the meeting, so in the two weeks since last council meeting, there's been some work done. I've asked Chris if he could come up and comment, just briefly comment on the street flooding issues, I think that one of the residents brought up what they found, and then Chief Adams to comment on some of the work that they're starting and doing with speeding here on West Center Street, and I'll have one other item to follow up on.
Can you bring up an Ariel? On the flooding issue, it was a situation where she was concerned that the pipe across the road was clogged, and we went and investigated that, and it was clear, and as we looked at it, felt like, let's see, it was on Eighth North and about Second, right about there. And so what had happened is water was coming around, let's see, okay, water was coming around the corner, and, and there's a couple of driveover driveways here and here, and it started back up. It was potted on this corner quite a bit and had built up, you could see a line here where the water was up over to the sidewalk, and, and so she was concerned because it had gotten kind of up to where a driveway was, and it's pretty deep in this area, and, and so we checked these pipes going across the road here, and, and they were clear, but again, they are designed for a 10-year storm, and, and most all pipes for storm drain systems are designed for 10-year storms. And then if we have more than a 10-year storm, it's supposed to back up into the street, and if houses are built up high enough, they hold the water in. This is a particularly busy corner for storm water. A lot of the storm water coming through the blocks hits that corner, and so it gets deeper here than a, than a lot of corners. And as we looked at it, some of the driveways here likely have a lot less capacity even than a 10-year storm, they back up and it kind of goes around the driveways. We noticed that this driveway right here was kind of deteriorated a bit. This house is for sale, and so we contacted the real estate agent and asked them to make the repairs on the driveover. We think that would help a little, but when you have more than a 10-year storm, which we did have, it'll back up in the streets and it'll be deep, and luckily, her house wasn't ever in danger, it just kind of backed up into the driveway a little bit, and it's pretty deep in the gutter, but there's not a lot we can do about this. Some of the brainstormed ideas that we've had is, in fact, Jamie Chapler, Streets Division Manager, suggested this. We had some similar problems with this up around Park School area, and we did a couple of LID projects at Larson Elementary and the Diamond Fork, and it seemed to really help attenuate the water and slow it down enough so that, that you have some clearing occurring before the, you know, the time of concentration for the big storm water flow, and that seemed to help a lot. And so we have a meeting, we're calling it the Blocks Flood Meeting, coming up, and we're drawing on the map all the places where we know there are flooding issues, and, and then we're bringing up, we have a map with all the curb and gutter, a lot of these deep irrigation-type gutters that we have in the blocks, and they all have directional arrows for where the curb and gutter's flowing. And with that, we're going to isolate drainage areas and see if, if there's one or two drainage areas that we could really focus on, maybe with some LID, attenuate the water and solve some areas which usually are at the north end of town, and so that's, that's kind of where we landed with this. I think I'd like to speak a little bit about Steve's issue of. I think I'd like to speak a little bit about Steve's issue. If you could zoom down to 100 South. Just down a little bit here and then over, over in this area. Okay. So if you, if you zoom out a little bit and then we want to look down a little bit. Okay. So the concern was in this area. You have this straightaway and the concern was traffic's pretty fast in this area and they're wondering if there's some traffic calming that could be done there. I know Steve's department has done some things there to help, but as our engineering office also looked at this closely. Right now you have this road is actually a collector class road, whereas this is a local road. And so this actually has priority over this road. If you can zoom in right here, maybe into this area right here. A couple of things that we noticed is that there's a cross gutter right here, which as a dip slows traffic quite a bit. You can't hit that cross gutter too hard. And then there's a yield sign here and a yield sign here. And so as you, as you're headed northbound going through this, you go through this dip, you have to yield to the collector road and then basically start from a relatively slow, slower speed going north. It really doesn't warrant traffic calming on this street. In fact, it would be a precedence that, I mean, you couldn't, you couldn't keep up that precedence all over town. There's, there's a lot worser situations. And so we, we didn't find any warrants for any traffic calming on, on this road for that other one. And I think Steve has some things to share too, but I just wanted to add that.
Mayor, we found people were speeding, going 55 miles an hour on that short stretcher roadway that Chris talked about that says, "We don't need any calming devices." I'm just kidding. We did.
I was going to say, I wasn't driving on that road.
Really briefly, we did send a half a dozen officers out in that area. They, they found that, Chris is right, that the yield signs are slowing people down to under 20 miles an hour going around the corner and then through the intersection. There was one car, well, they were there that was speeding, but all the rest of them were, were going slow. Now we've got a cop car there, so people are going to see the cop car and they're going to slow down. So we have had the traffic trailer there. That data has yet to be collected, but that will, I think, can just confirm what Chris has told us as well as what our officers observed.
Anything on Center?
On Center Street, we have yet to put a trailer there. We, we have it in, we had two other higher priority areas and our intent is to get on that one when it's, when we're done with these other two areas.
Should the trailer have that green light?
No, no, the trailer. What's really nice about the trailer, it collects the, the data about the time, the speed, the direction, and it gives us a pretty good evaluation of, of what's really happening there. Like I said, if a cop car is parked there, then we act differently, so.
Perfect.
Also, one other item to bring before the council on Thursday, it is the mayor's birthday. And I think it would be appropriate for all of us to sing happy birthday.
I think so too.
I think you ought to give us a pitch there, Stacy?
Oh, no.
No, I don't think it's a good idea.
All right, well, I think we should sing happy birthday anyways.
And that's for once, I agree with Shane.
So are you guys comfortable joining in and singing happy birthday to the mayor? This is the last time we'll get at the council meeting.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear mayor. Happy birthday to you.
That's all I have.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you for that wonderful, resounding song. I appreciate it and I appreciate all the good wishes. Okay, let's go to Spanish Fork 101, River Bottoms TDR video presentation, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor. For tonight, I'll be quick. The River Bottoms is a special place. It's special for the people that live there. It's special for people that farm there. It's special for people that own property there. And it's special for people that live in the community that surround it. And with that in mind, you know, we've done quite a bit of work over the course of the past few years relative to trying to understand what the best path might be for the River Bottoms' future. And let's watch a video that's been referenced earlier tonight about a particular proposal that the city's been working on for about the last year.
Spanish Fork has long been known as an agricultural community. In 1850, the first settler claimed land in the area and soon after populated it with cattle. Since then, the area has grown its roots in agriculture. The first Utah County Livestock Show was held in 1925 with three livestock auctions and agrarian-centered businesses opening in the town thereafter. These farms and businesses not only had an economic impact on the residents of the area, they've had a cultural impact as well. The agricultural landscape, complete with open fields and pastoral landscapes, has strongly influenced the city's sense of place and identity.
I'm in the middle of one of the most beautiful places in our community, affectionately known as the River Bottoms. These 1,800 acres are home to farmland that has been worked for more than 170 years.
The River Bottoms represents the natural and agrarian heritage of Utah County and provides an opportunity for the community to preserve a piece of its heritage.
Areas with the River Bottoms' beauty and access to amenities are rare along the Wasatch Front. For those and many other reasons, the River Bottoms has increasingly felt the pressures to change, largely being driven by the tremendous demand for housing in the region. This pressure is exactly why I feel responsible as a council member to do what I can to help preserve this area for future generations to enjoy.
That's why this project has become so important for Spanish Fork City. In order to solve these issues, the city has developed a two-part plan. First, the plan would protect and preserve the River Bottoms while protecting the property rights of landowners. Second, the plan encourages development in places in the community that make sense, like downtown or around transit plants. Spanish Fork City believes a unique tool is needed in order to satisfy these diverse desires. This tool is called transferable development rights. Transferable development rights, or TDRs, provide a path for Spanish Fork to preserve the River Bottoms, provide monetary compensation to property owners, and direct development to appropriate areas in Spanish Fork. The Land Use Academy of Utah has prepared a short video to help explain the concept.
What is a TDR? It's not a new app for your phone. It means a transferable development right. A TDR authorizes by ordinance a landowner to transfer the right to develop and use land in one area to another property owner somewhere else. There must be specific sending zones to transfer or send those rights to a designated receiving zone. Communities in Utah by ordinance can choose to adopt TDRs as a tool in their planning efforts. Communities use TDRs to achieve goals like more public open space in one part of town or more development, or economic growth in another, all without taxing the general public. TDRs give communities a tool to move development potential from areas they may want to preserve, the sending zones, to areas where growth is desired, the receiving zone. The bottom line, this is a policy choice that Utah's communities can make to use to direct growth. But you must have an ordinance to do so and you must have specifically designated areas that you can send and receive these land use rights. Be sure to read the code on this one.
The Spanish Fork program is planned to follow four guiding principles. Participation must be voluntary. TDR values must be market-driven. Ample opportunity to sell development rights. And consideration for future maintenance and care. Like other TDR programs, specific sending and receiving areas would be defined. The sending area would be the River Bottoms and the receiving areas would be located throughout the community where the city can more easily accommodate residential growth. The process property owners would follow to participate in the program is intended to be simple, straightforward, and clear. Here's how it would work. First, a property owner would meet with city staff to determine how many transferable development rights they are eligible to receive. This determination is made based on established formulas and the characteristics of individual properties. If the property owner decides they would like to participate, their next step would be to ask the city to create TDR certificates for their property. These certificates then become the commodity that the property owners could sell to a developer. Additionally, a conservation easement would be created to make it clear that the property cannot be developed. With the certificates in hand, property owners are able to negotiate with potential buyers at their leisure. When the certificates are purchased by a developer and the development of the receiving property is approved, the TDRs have served their purpose.
Utah law expressly allows for the use of transferable development rights as a way to balance the rights and opportunities people have to develop with communities' goals to preserve specific areas like the River Bottoms.
One of the key goals of the program is to encourage continual agricultural operations in the River Bottoms. For that reason, special attention will be given to allow for caretaker and posterity homes, the ongoing maintenance of land, the protection of agricultural accesses, and notices about farmers' rights to continue to farm.
What I like about the TDR program is that this creates a way to preserve the land, its beauty and use, but also provides for growth in our community. And we as landowners can be part of both solutions. Our family has worked this land for three generations, but our children really don't have a desire to follow in our footsteps. This plan creates the way for us to get value out of our property without losing the farm. We're all for growth and progress, but not at the cost of losing this beautiful area. With a TDR, we can get a fair value from this property without ruining it.
I like the idea of preserving the natural beauty of the River Bottoms. That's one of the appealing reasons for people wanting to move to Spanish Fork. The TDR program gives me a way to be a part of that while giving me some advantages in my projects. I think it's a big win-win.
With the transferable development rights program, it's really a win-win-win. Landowners receive real value for their property without losing it. Developers get an incentive to develop in areas outside of the River Bottoms. And Spanish Fork continues to grow and provide the best hometown experience anywhere. I love my regular walks down this river trail. It's a peaceful reminder of how great we have it here in Spanish Fork. The TDR concept will preserve this beauty while honoring the interests and desires of so many people in our community. Let's work together in preserving our past and planning for our future.
A lot of effort went into what was just described in that video and I really appreciate the way people have captured that. And to that end, as well, nothing's set in stone. We have a proposal that we shared with a number of different people in different ways, basically anybody that would give us airtime and that would listen. We've received a lot of input and yet we know that there are questions that are out there to that end, like the mayor said. We're planning on doing what likely I think are going to be a number of different things. Again, to try to answer questions, to share information about what we've been working on and as well to get people's thoughts. Like I said, nothing's set in stone today. I do think that what, what we are sharing with the community now has been refined considerably. A lot of effort's gone into getting to where we are now. Tuesday, the 24th, I believe 11 o'clock a.m. is when we'll have kind of our next conversation about this program and the River Bottoms. Certainly invite everyone in the council to tune into that, community at large. In addition to that, we have a webpage that's devoted to the topic. We'll, we'll put more detailed information on that. And our standard will likely have some type of an opportunity available via that webpage for people to share thoughts, comments, concerns, ask questions, and to do that type of a thing over the course of the next, whatever it takes, matter of weeks, months, whatever it might be, to have you as the council ultimately be comfortable taking a step forward, adopting a program, not adopting a program, or just doing whatever, whatever you think's best at this point. And the last thought that I have kind of pertains to that and any things that you'd like us to do. Again, kind of in the spirit of next steps and, you know, gaining a certain level of comfort in terms of deciding as to whether or not this is the right thing to do or not. Please feel free, reach out to me. I'd love to, to talk that through. I'm going to be relying really heavily on Nick Porter as well as we, we talk about the process and the best way to go about making sure that we've considered as much as we possibly can with something that's as important as this. Personally, I don't think there really is much that's as important relative to future quality of life for people in and around Spanish Fork is what we're working on here. So it's a big deal. I appreciate your time tonight, very much so, and would love to talk more about it as you guys might want to.
One question. Participate in this and get the certificates, sell my certificates, and then say I sell my property. I can still do that, correct?
Short answer is yes. That's absolutely the intent.
But that would, the continuation of the non-development would continue to the next owner of that property, correct?
Yes.
Always.
So maybe just to not leave that stone unturned, maybe just go a little bit deeper, I think, with what you're asking. The basic concept of a transferable development right is that you have land. And as government entities assign certain opportunities for people to use that land, different development rights, you might separate the land from a development right and be able to, in a case like this, sell this potentially. So that would be used on property elsewhere. So as a property owner, you could look at it as if I might have two different rights. I own land that has value and have the right to use it in a certain way. Just because I sell the right to use it in a certain way, that doesn't change the fact that I would own the land. And that has value still, frankly, less value, right? As the ability to use it in a more limited way, conceivably forever, is really the intent. And I think that's the bottom line for your question. As that becomes a reality, then the value, value absolutely is impacted negatively. The land is worth less than it was before, but still there are opportunities to use the land in different ways. We see land sold throughout the world for agricultural purposes. And that's basically what, if the program were to be implemented as it's written today, that's what property owners would be left with is agricultural land. And I assume the land would be valued that way. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Good. And a lot of this will be answered. We'll have an opportunity, anybody that wants to call you and talk to you, meantime, we'll have that Facebook Live and you can talk about any questions you got there.
Can I ask, Dave?
Sorry, Dave, one thing I think would be helpful, this isn't going to be something that is decided on Facebook. That's just one of our means of, of communicating and educating. There is a process where we have to follow lots of steps, actually. And first, maybe most importantly, none of the land in this area is in the city at the moment. And so we don't, we don't have any legal jurisdiction over the land anyway. But Dave, if you could maybe outline the timeline that you see for some of the public meetings that we'll have, so the council knows, I mean, we may not hit them all because of certain meetings, you may say, "Let's take longer on this or that." But give us a sense of what that timetable is. I'll give the easy answer there, which is not before October. So acting on the program the way that it's written now would require you to amend your zoning code. And before we do that, there is public notice provided for public hearings for both Planning Commission and City Council meetings. So depending on maybe how things are received by you and the rest of the community over the course of the next several weeks, perhaps in October, you might want us to move forward with the process to present this to the Planning Commission in their meeting, to hold a public meeting then and maybe a public, sorry, to hold a public hearing in the Planning Commission meeting in October, and then perhaps likewise to have a public hearing in your second meeting in October. Which, if we get to that point and you've gone through the process to give proper notice and to hold those hearings, at that point in time, you as the council could act however you'd care to. Meaning it could be adopted then as it is or with changes, however you'd care to see it put into play. however you'd care to see it put into play. Then in October, you might choose to delay that, wait until November or December. You might direct us to wait until November, December as well to go through that formal process of having public hearings. Those are some of the types of things that I hope to maybe get some guidance and direction from you on. Perhaps that comes to me via the city manager or something like that, but I don't want personally to be presumptuous about what process you want us to go through from here to whatever the finish line might be. But again, things like having a Facebook Live event, frankly, I think, and some of the things that Nick and I have talked about, just maybe making ourselves as staff available for a couple of afternoons for people to come in and ask questions and to talk things through. Maybe there are other forums that are akin to Facebook Live where we're both able to answer questions and to receive input. Different mediums like websites, different things like that that are almost getting old-fashioned now, but can be really good ways to, again, have a conversation with people. I think as much as anything, we don't want anybody to be surprised about what the city's trying to do or how we're trying to do it. That certainly hasn't been our MO to date, and providing as many opportunities for people to become educated as they can be, and likewise, as much as we're maybe providing thoughts and suggestions to you, us becoming educated to help you likewise understand all of the different details and feelings and perceptions and suggestions as well. As always, we welcome whatever thoughts or ideas anybody might have about how to improve upon what we're working on here. Hopefully, that's done in kind of the underlying spirit of whether it's a TDR, kind of a mechanism or anything else, the direction that I feel like we've received very loudly and clearly from a large community of a lot of different stakeholders, is to do something to try to help keep the river bottoms as much like it is now as we possibly can. So inasmuch as anybody has any thoughts or ideas on how to make that happen, I think we'd be wise to take as much input on that as we can get.
Did you have a question, Shane?
Yeah, Seth kind of cut me, but that's good.
Get used to that.
We're thinking a lot alike, and it's scaring me a little bit. Just big picture process in my head, Dave. For several years, we took, we've taken discussion, we've studied, we've thought about what to do down there. You have come to a point where you have a proposal written, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Something tangible to depart as.
Right.
So now you're going to share that with everybody, Facebook Live, whatever medium you're going to do. Let that out there, let people pick it apart, let us pick it apart, do whatever. Then there'll be a proposal in front of a future city council, a future planning commission with a public hearing, and then another public hearing with the city council. That's generally the process we have yet to go through, correct?
Spot on, as I see it.
Trying to, in my head, how this works out. I'm not, timing-wise, we do need to figure that out, but just, there's a lot of work left. A lot of opportunity for comments, a lot of opportunity for discussion. Fair?
Important, fair and important, I would say, yes.
I think to this point, it's been such a nebulous thing, just discussion has been happening, but now we have something in front of us to say, does this work or not? Strike this line, add this line. Now it's time to, you have a menu, let's digest the menu and make some comments.
I don't see us progressing at all, but for taking some next step that's different than where we've been at for the past several months, really.
Exactly, we need something on paper.
Yeah, we need to go forward.
Wrong and different, we need something on paper, and now that's where we're at.
Yep.
My question is, if you're as far enough along that if we were discussing, my dad's farm out in Lake Shore, and I said, all right, the 45 acres that he's on, can you help me get to how many TDRs that would equal? You know, as we've got a handful of these residents here, if they wanted to meet with you or staff and say, okay, this is my area, this is my land that we're talking about, you know, what does this really mean? And could you really help them get to a, you know, number so that everybody can see a clear picture of what that means for everybody separately? Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
We could get to a precise number right now.
Okay.
With what is spelled out in draft form. In all candor, I think the numbers, you know, kind of the formula, is critical for the success of what we're trying to do here. If there's any part of it that I think probably warrants, yeah, maybe some fine tuning, a different look, perspective, anything like that at all, that's probably it. What you're talking about now, as much as we have dozens and dozens of pages that have been prepared by consultants, legal counsel, us as planning staff, about the program and how it would work and that type of a thing, people tend to zero in on, what does it mean for me, both potentially as an owner of property in the river bottoms that might be selling rights to somebody else, and likewise, people in other parts of the community that might be looking to develop and wanting to know, okay, so what might this mean for me? You know, if I can strike a deal, so to speak, with somebody in the river bottoms and purchase rights, you know, can that work for me? How would it work? What does that look like? All of those different questions, which, part of why I feel like this is a point, you know, where we need to progress. We're having conversations at both ends of that, or each end of that spectrum now. People with development interests that have heard about what we're doing and that are really inquisitive about how they might be able to use transferred development rights, and likewise, people, property owners are very concerned about what this means for them, so.
But up to this point, it was a bunch of what-ifs. What if we did this, and what if we did this? Now you can take that policy into Councilman Gordon's point, walk it all the way through, and say, if we use this piece of paper or this document, this is what would happen.
With precision, yeah. I mean, it's just numbers, right? So that part's really easy to quantify and define.
One last thought I had the other night was, we have areas in town where farmers farm, but they're able to use our pressurized irrigation. These farmers hold a very valuable water right with their ground as well. What if we looked at opportunities as far as putting in infrastructure to run the pressurized irrigation as they farmed in the future? Has that been brought up before?
That specifically, no, but the need to make sure that water's still available on the river bottoms long-term, that's pretty critical, given the idea that keeping the river bottoms like it is now involves making farming into the future as viable as we possibly can. So, I mean, that might be a suggestion, the type of thing that we're looking for now.
Gives them an opportunity to maybe do something with that share if they're able to purchase a pressurized irrigation water. That would be up to them, but, you know, anyway.
While ensuring that water's available perpetually.
Yeah, yeah, we know how valuable that product is, right? The water shares, so, okay, just some thoughts that I've had. Thanks.
Mayor, can I ask one question?
It's a short one, as long as we don't.
One, no, one short one. I just wonder if there's any time before all this takes place or in the near future when they are going to meet with all of the landlords, not just a certain specific few, but all of us.
So I'll repeat a question, Mrs. Ellsworth, Chris Ellsworth. And this is not a public hearing. I think, to be fair to the world, I think it'd be important not to make this a public hearing. Again, this is just an informational session for you, and really, my question for you as a council, the direction I've asked Dave to get from you is, are we ready to move forward? We've done, we've spent a lot of years now, probably two years longer in this process than I would have liked, but it seems like it's time to move forward or, you know, abandon, if you will, and so I'm looking for that direction. From you, Dave's presented just the initial video, and you've been involved in and are aware of all the work that's gone on, and we're going to proceed forward with studying the process in the formal sense, right, in presenting the process and in reviewing it with the Planning Commission, reviewing it with the city council. To Mrs. Ellsworth's question, she asked again, when will we meet with the homeowners? We've had literally, over the last handful of years, a dozen meetings or so with homeowners in different settings. I'm not sure if she was invited to or if she made it to, some of them or all of them. At this moment, I am not inclined to recommend that we have a large group meeting with just one group. There isn't, I don't think anything more that we can gain from that kind of a setting. We've been able to harvest as much information as we can get. The comments and concerns that were expressed tonight are not new to us and have all been considered, whether they like the direction we're going to go or the direction we're going to, the direction we're going to propose, you know, that certainly remains to be seen, but we've collected as much information as we can from all the different parties. We're happy to and continue to welcome any interactions with the Ellsworths or any other families and landowners, but getting everybody together, quite frankly, has become quite an emotional setting, and I don't think it's wonderfully productive. I think it creates maybe even more derision or division amongst different groups, and so I don't know that I would recommend doing that. If you want us to do that, if you want to be a part of that, certainly can do that. One of the next best forums would be to have the proposals, present them at length, review them, have public hearings on them, and invite all involved, landowners, all different stakeholders, et cetera, to participate in that public process. We did a lot of research on this, as I said, from the beginning in doing surveys of specific groups, landowners, residents, developers, and just different groups, and we've tried to get all that information in some compartmentalized fashion so we can identify the issues of each of the stakeholder groups and blend them together. Not everybody's going to like everything, but hopefully there is some value there. So we'd like to move forward with formally noticing, educating, and then reviewing with the Planning Commission and the city council from this point forward.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on then, let's move on to the consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing ordinance Z15-21 Slim Chickens proposed zone change from R1-6 to C2 with the development enhancement overlay.
Let's give the mayor a thank you. The subject property on this is located on the southeast corner of 400 East and 1,000 North. There are two homes there on 10th North. I think they're the last two single-family homes on the south side there of the roadway, and the proposal tonight involves those two properties. You can see from this that they are still zoned residential, so one part of the proposal would have that zoning changed from R1-6 to commercial 2 to allow for the proposed use, which is a quick-serve restaurant with a drive-through, that'd be located there on that site. And the other part of the proposal has to do with potentially, if you're comfortable with it, employing a particular zoning overlay, the development enhancement overlay, on the subject property so that the proposed development could deviate from a couple of our typical zoning requirements, a setback requirement and a particular landscape with requirement. If you, and maybe Nick, if you can go to one of the site plan images for us.
On page one of Exhibit 3, maybe the, yeah. So this might help you see what we're talking about in terms of, for example, where we typically would require a certain amount of landscaping along 10th North, and likewise, a certain amount of landscaping consistently along a property line where a commercial use shares a boundary with a residential use. Given the unique configuration of the property and its depth, in order to be able to site the building with the parking being configured the way that we as staff thinks it would work the best, having the best queuing for the drive-throughs and different things like that.
You think that's what it? I thought he was in Texas.
We think it's appropriate to allow this particular business to have a little less landscaping, I believe it's four feet less than what our standard otherwise would require along 10th North, and to have a small area right here that would only have a foot or two of landscaping where typically 10 feet's required on the south edge. So that being said, both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission have recommended that both the proposed change to the C2 zone and the use of the development enhancement overlay be approved. I understand that if the zone change is approved tonight by the city council, the applicants are fairly eager to get started on the development of the site, which, given conversations we've had with other potential users of properties along 10th North over the years, I think it's very consistent with what we had anticipated seeing at this particular location, and that's where we're at.
One entrance, one exit.
Two, and kind of three even. So they will be able to access the site from here, coming in this way.
So they'll share with Discount?
They'll share with that, and they have a connection through Discount Tire. You know, I need to take that back, too. I was thinking that this was designed to connect as well here and here. Those are their two points of access.
Block fence around these apartments?
Correct, yes, so there will be a block wall on that property line there, or a masonry wall.
And those are apartments or a house?
This is a duplex.
Yeah. So, and you, you may not know, my understanding is they're going to do some remodeling here to move this farther away from the corner, so the congestion here, am I jumping?
What they plan to do here won't have any impact on the corner and congestion. Now, what these folks will do, that will allow for the development of a right-hand turn lane here.
Another lane there.
So that will help to some degree with any.
That right-hand turn is not there now?
I don't believe so.
It's a through and right.
Dave, will you clarify again, like where the in and out areas are?
Right here. So, trying to think of, if you could just picture, and maybe Nick, I don't know how long it would take to pull up, maybe Google Earth, but we can look at that. The southern boundary of the property here and the existing drive here would remain, and they would simply access the site.
Okay, we might have some more questions after the public hearing.
Great.
And so I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
It's all moved. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now in the public hearing. Anyone that'd like to come and talk about this proposal, you're welcome to come on up here. Just state your name and get your three minutes of fame.
Hello, my name is Cody Williams. I'm the design engineer on this project, and you did a great job presenting. I don't think I have really too much to add, other than we still are providing 10 feet of landscaping on 400 West, which is the current requirement. We are dedicating quite a bit of right-of-way on this project. The 400 West, of course, as you said earlier, we were getting a right-turn lane in on that road, which, of course, increased traffic flow there, and also, this isn't our current iteration. We've worked quite a bit with Mike Clark in the engineering department, very extensively to work with the transportation engineer as well to refine this design. We have actually dedicated more property along 1,000 North to allow for a problem that Mike had brought up, where people on 1,000 North are trying to make U-turns at this location, and currently, as designed, an F-150 can't make a U-turn there without having to do a two-point turn. So we've increased the lane, traffic lane width there on 1,000 North, again, just making it more drivable, and we've tried to connect in with Discount Tire to eliminate, you know, multiple entry points. We have a shared drive access, you know, just helping out traffic flow, trying to do the best we can. Yeah, any other questions as far as design-related, I'd be happy to answer.
Would Chevrolet Silverado make that turn?
Absolutely.
Right, that's what I wanted to hear. Figured you're right. Thank you. Anyone else like to come and talk? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of the public hearing.
It's all moved. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal and a second by Councilman Menon Hall. Okay, any other questions or comments about this? other questions or comments about this property?
Transportation, I have to say something, huh?
You don't have to.
I have to, Mayor, I have to. All right, so during the planning commission, they, they talked a lot about, um, this, this access of tenth. Um, you can see in their plans, they developed that right turn lane about, I don't know what, three-quarters of the way into the property, so right there. The justification for leaving this section out further into tenth was landscaping.
Exactly, yeah.
Um, is that consistent around, down tenth? That landscaping buffer, is that consistent down tenth?
As much as we've been able to, to get some there, and everything's really been a site-specific
Okay.
Kind of a fit, so if you look at Quick Quack, you can even see from this image a little bit that there's some landscaping on each side of the sidewalk. I think one thing that we really wanna avoid, particularly on a road like tenth north, is that combination curb sidewalk right next to the curb type of a thing.
Do you get that in this section when it turns into a turn lane?
That's what goes away, yeah.
There's no?
I don't believe there is. I can take a closer look at that, and maybe you can clarify the, the curb and the, and the sidewalk joint at that point.
Their continuous set of the right turn lane there.
I'd like to have that back. I, I think that we're going to miss an opportunity to gain that third lane because we want landscaping here.
Well, one option to that end would be simply to have them dedicate, excuse me, dedicate adequate right-of-way, to dedicate adequate right-of-way so that if we ever did want to expand in the future, we could, and for as long as it, it would function the way it's designed now, we could, uh...
It's a pretty cheap solution in the future, as long as we own the right-of-way.
The right-of-way's the tricky part, right?
Well, okay.
So I don't know if the applicant would have any concerns about. I think we're looking for a road dedication plat with this, so that would be reflected in that document, and that could be another condition of approval.
I think my only concern is, like, landscaping with that duplex right behind us. Is there anything we can do to make a little bit of a buffer so they're not looking right down onto asphalt in a restaurant?
Well, the buffer's a little bit, it's a little bit, um, I don't wanna say misleading. I think that having the landscaping there is important. I think it serves a number of different purposes. But where you already have a six-foot masonry wall, and the landscaping is gonna be on the business side of it, I think it has maybe less value
Okay.
than if, if we're landscaping adjacent to the duplex and then the wall on the other side.
But you said normally there's ten feet of landscaping, but that landscaping, I guess what you're saying, could be shrubs, not necessarily trees.
We, with it, and the ten feet is typically an important number, because with ten feet, you can expect some sizable trees, we call them shade trees
Right.
um, to thrive and survive well in that kind of environment. So, among other things, at some point in the future, conceivably, not only do you have a six-foot wall, but maybe you have some tree canopy up above as well that helps enhance that buffer. Um, I am a big fan and proponent of that. I think it's really, really important, and at the same time, I'm glad that we have this tool and the zoning code so that at least you as the council can decide if that's critical everywhere or not. Um, I think other things that this site offers, in terms of how it's designed right now, personally, I think missing that, that landscaping right there is, uh, an acceptable trade-off for other things that...
Then can you point out what those other things are that you're super impressed with, just so I know?
So there, this area will be landscaped, and that will have trees in it. There will be trees in these parking islands and the parking lot, as well as along the majority of the frontage out here.
Right.
So, from where the property is now, to where it will be when it's developed, should this go forward in this fashion, I think it's a significant leap forward in terms of, not only beautifying the corner, but the community, and I think that really is an enhancement for adjacent neighbors as well. Um, I guess that's how I look at it, is kinda just bigger picture. Um, and I have to say also that, in terms of the, the things that we've talked about, potentially landing on this site over the years, and this is a use that creates some challenges when you have a drive-through, uh, you know, with a restaurant like this, but, um, I think this use is preferred to some other things that, that conceivably could go on property that's, that's general planned commercial. So that is kinda also part of my thinking.
Dave, the current sidewalk that's here is moving south, right? That sidewalk doesn't stay, everything gets shifted.
My understanding is correct.
Any other questions, comments? So, uh, to make a motion, if we're gonna include, do we have to include what Councilman Marshall wants to, uh, have in there?
It's really helpful to do that, yes.
Good, then I'm gonna let him make that motion.
I can feel it coming this way. Okay, I'll give it a shot. So I move to approve zone, approve ordinance Z fifteen dash twenty-one Slim Chickens. That the proposed zone change to the Z two? Oh my goodness. Come on. Did you just correct me?
Nope.
To the C two zone, with the development enhancement overlay to be approved based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions. Finding number one, that the proposal is consistent with the general, city's general planned use designation, that the proposal conforms to the findings described in the development enhancement overlay, and three, that a road dedication plat with right-of-way dedicated on tenth south be provided to the city.
Tenth north. Is that covered? Are you good with that?
Tenth north.
I said?
He said south.
It's south, I did. This is north.
It's north.
Right, seven. One thousand north.
If that doesn't work, let me know.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilman Marshall.
Second.
Second by Councilman Beck. This will be a roll call vote. Council Mendenhall.
Aye.
Council Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Okay, that approved. Is that okay with you, Mr. Our Boy Scout here? Have you ever eaten at a Slim Chickens?
No, I think it's fine.
Okay, well, you know, you should get a bucket full for sitting through all this council meeting, so we wanna recognize our one Boy Scout here. You doing this for a merit badge?
Yeah.
Yeah, good man.
Nice work.
Keep it up, keep it up. This'll be the hardest thing. Once you get done, everything else is cake.
Give him a gun, chief.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to, uh, new business. Uh, Johnson subdivision proposed preliminary plat approval request for master plan development in the R fifteen, R one fifteen zone, including fifty-three lots located at one thousand south, thirty-four hundred east.
One more time, thank you, Mayor. This property was annexed fairly recently, within the last year, and at the time of annexation, R one fifteen zoning was assigned to the property. So this is a little bit easier than, um, subdivision approvals might often be, where they're accompanied by a proposed zone change. In this case, the applicant is simply proposing to develop the property, uh, as a master plan development. That's why you're the land use authority instead of the planning commission. Uh, as proposed, the project meets all of the city's criteria for master plan developments in the R one fifteen zone. Makes it easy for us as we review it. Really, the only thing that, um, I would say is unique at all about the property is the fact that, um, there is an existing cell tower on the property right here, uh, hence, um, some of the language that you see on proposed conditions of approval that have to do with, uh, some enhancements that we believe are important to make, um, at the time of development, just so that, um, that's a good neighbor to property owners, to homeowners, as they, they build and live in the, the neighborhood. So, that being said, both the planning commission and the development review committee have reviewed this and recommended that it be approved, ultimately based on the finding that we have there in the staff report, and subject to those conditions as well. And that's all that I have.
Any questions or comments? Seem, go ahead.
There's, the only access is on thirty-four hundred south?
Uh, two accesses, one here, sorry, two, thirty-four hundred east
Okay.
is right here. I didn't remember the south of that. We can, we can get that really quickly though.
So that's there, tenth there?
Yes.
Okay.
This is here.
Then you gotta remember the bottom.
Somewhat difficult to tell.
And you know what? I am not sure that there is a road there.
There's not, not right now.
There's not a road there.
South DR Orms.
Right, so...
South Michigan.
This is not constructed either. There's no road south of this one, but we anticipate that that's gonna be in place in a matter of months. So, uh, let's just look at this from a worst-case scenario kind of perspective, which is probably important. Um, the just over fifty homes that they have here, our ordinance would allow for the majority of those to be constructed with just one access. Um, but there would be a limit on the number of homes that they could build until some other access to the property is provided.
Okay, any other?
A limit less than fifty-three?
Yes, um, thirty-five. Uh, um, and Chris, maybe you could help me with this. Thirty-five with a, in a temporary situation, oh, sorry, or is it fifty on temporary, thirty-five on permanent?
Yeah, so this would allow fifty, because it would be considered temporary because they have that accessing to the south.
So, almost all of them.
Obviously, the developments are gonna develop together, bringing utilities there, so it's not gonna be...
Right.
It sure looks like that's how it's playing out, yeah.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve Johnson subdivision proposed preliminary plat approval request for a master plan development in the R one fifteen zone, including fifty-five, fifty-five lots located at one thousand south, thirty-four hundred east, based on those findings listed.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck.
Second.
Second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. Let's go down to B. Integrating Supply Agreement and Amendment with General Parts Company doing, uh, business as APA, Auto Parts, NAPA.
Yeah, so IBS, uh, which also has NAPA, uh, it would be, uh, placing a supply house at our shop. This has been done by several other cities in Utah. They've all had a really good experience with this, and, uh, not only will it be much more convenient to get mu- much of our supplies, but we anticipate it saving us between sixty and eighty thousand dollars a year.
Great. Questions, comments?
Is it full shop or is it just a vending machine?
Full shop. They, they'll have an employee there. Uh, at one point, they were talking about having two employees there, but they have scaled it back to one, but they'll have access to have runners coming from other shops in the area, so.
Cool. Did we bid this? Did they come to us? How did?
So, so there's a, a, a national bid, uh, that we're piggybacking on. Uh, there, there is not a lot of places that do this. In fact, this is the only place we are aware of, and so, we did work out a proposal that matched that national bid that the other cities are using, so.
So they, they bid on it. You had a procurement process to arrive to this point?
Yeah, and, and a lot of the bidding occurs as they acquire the, the goods to sell us, if that makes sense, but, but, no, this, this didn't go through an RFP process where several different companies that do this. This is the only company that we know of that does this.
Any other questions? I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve integrated supply agreement and amendment with Genuine Parts Company doing business as NAPA Auto Parts.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay. Resolution twenty-one dash eighteen, water to be transferred to the city upon development.
Okay, wh- what we're proposing is just two main changes to this ordinance. The rest are kinda just, uh, kinda grammatical, but the first one is we're adding, uh, eight point four percent to the water right exaction that we have on residential development only. The reason is, is, is a study that was done, uh, on our parks showed that that's how much parkland is, that we have per residential unit, and so what we're trying to do is capture enough water right to supply water to those parks. Assuming that with our impact fee facilities plan, we're going to keep about the same amount of park space per residential unit, we need to make sure we acquire the water that's needed to water that park space. We, we only exact water in this instance, and so we added that to, to, uh, to the water right exaction. And so, if normally they would give us one acre foot of water for the house, they would now give us one point oh eight, four acre feet of water. So, the second change is with, uh, uh, non-residential, uh, commercial businesses that use a lot of indoor water, they come to us and they tell us how much water they anticipate using. And then we based our water right exaction on how much water they tell us they're going to use. Uh, the, what we do with our impact fees, which is under a similar situation, is we say, "Well, after a year, or two years, or every year thereafter, we audit that," and we just kinda make sure it's right. If they say, "Well, we're gonna use five acre feet of water a year," and they use ten, that has a big impact on our system. And so, uh, we audit that, and if, if it's more than ten percent difference, then, then, then we make the correction, and we, we say, "Well, you know, you're using a lot more water than, than you said you were. You really should acquire that water and, and dedicate that to the city," so we make sure that we have enough water going forward. And so, it just mirrors what our impact fee ordinance says, but where the water right exaction is not an impact fee, uh, we're just copying that in there. So, any questions?
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash eighteen, amending the water to be transferred to the city upon development.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. This also is a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
All righty. Utah County, Spanish Fork Center Street, US six pedestrian trail agreement amendment interlocal cooperation with MAG.
Okay, so I'll, I have one explanation for the next two items, and, and basically, what we had is a situation where we had some MAG, a mountainous association, a government funding for a pedestrian underpass or tunnel at US six and Center Street. Uh, we were very concerned about this when, uh, Diamond Fork Junior High was transitioning to, to be a middle school, and it, some of its boundary was going to go across US six, and we applied for, for MAG funding and received that. Uh, at, at one point, uh, this was turned over to UDOT. UDOT was actually helping to fund this project. Spanish Fork City was helping to fund this project. Nevo School District was helping to fund this project. And, and that project, in, in these times, uh, started escalating price up to three times the cost of originally anticipated, and, and, and the three organizations did not have the funds to do that. Also, Nevo School District changed their, their boundaries for this middle school so that they didn't cross over US six, and so that created less of a need to, to build this tunnel, and, and frankly, there just wasn't funds to build it anyway after those costs escalated. Uh, what these two agreements do is they transfer the one point seven million dollars that, uh, MAG had anticipated, uh, putting towards that other project, transfers it to our Center Street project, which also went over in costs as we, uh, moved some additional houses and had to move the gas pumps there for that, uh, for that gas station. And so, what it does is it transfers that funds from that project to a project that we have already expended some city funds on, and, and kinda keeps us whole on the other project. So, the first agreement is between us and the camp- So, the first agreement is between us and the county, because county funds were going to be used for the project for the tunnel project. And then the second agreement is between us and the county for the Center Street project, where we use county funds as well to receive those funds. So, one is to exit those funds from the first project, and then the other agreement is to receive the funds to the original project, so. Any questions on that?
And note that MAG approved all this in our MAG meeting.
Yes, and we appreciate that.
So, Chris, you've spent the $1.69 million?
Yes.
It's spent, this is reimbursing us?
Yes, this is just reimbursing us. We spent a little bit more than that on this Center Street project.
Okay. So, we're going to get this 1.6. Where does it then go if we've already...
So, it reimburses us. We spent that out of our general fund and that goes back in.
Okay. Goes back in the street fund?
Yeah.
Okay. I move to approve Utah County Spanish Fork Center Street, US 6 Pedestrian Trail Agreement Amendment Interlocal Cooperation MAG.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, go to E, Utah County, Spanish Fork City Center Street Project Agreement Amendment.
I move to approve the Utah County Spanish Fork City Center Street Project Agreement Amendment.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I move we go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation and land transaction.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? All right, thank you for everyone that was watching, and we appreciate everybody.